The city council meeting of Monday, October 6, 2025 to order at 7:00 PM and ask the city recorder to call the roll.
Counsel Beriantos?
Yeah.
Counsel Blaser?
Here.
Counsel Fitzgerald?
Here.
Counsel Holsapple?
Here.
Counsel Jantsch?
Here.
Counsel Schilling?
Here.
Counsel Shane?
Here.
Counsel President Briggs is excused.
All right, we have a quorum. Would everyone please join me standing for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We'll move right on to introductions, recognitions, and proclamations. You have something on the list there?
I do, Mayor, thank you. So, we have one tonight, and it's just more a recognition than anything. As you recall, recently, we had the Wall That Heals, which is a traveling replica of the Vietnam Memorial Wall in Washington, DC. And we had a great showing of our citizens and folks from Dallas that came out on our streets and watched the wall as it was paraded through town with local law enforcement, and our law enforcement officials here in Dallas participated in that as well. So, we're very grateful for that showing. So, if you recall, Billy was our Vietnam veteran from Independence who came over and talked about this with the city council previously and recognizing that it's coming and getting us excited about it. He apologized that he can't be here tonight, he has to be somewhere else, but he did give the city a commemorative coin that says "The Wall That Heals." And he wanted me to make sure I presented that to the city council and to the Mayor Slack, so I will do that on behalf of Billy.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Put that on display somewhere?
And we can put it in the mayor's office or somewhere like that.
For now, and then make sure it stays here at City Hall.
That'd be great.
All right. Anything else, any other introductions?
Nope.
All right, we'll move right on to public comment, then. Please come up to the table. If you're going to provide testimony for the record, please provide us with your name and whether or not you live within the city limits. You have up to three minutes. It's your turn to talk and ours to listen. You are responsible for the content, even if it was written by someone else. Also tonight, please note, if you're here to testify for a land use hearing regarding assigned variance on Monmouth Cut Off, there isn't a hearing scheduled with the city council. The land use hearing will be held with the planning commission on Thursday, October 9th, that's this Thursday, at 6:00 PM. So, if you want to testify at that public hearing, that will be on Thursday at 6:00 PM. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Do not direct your comments to individual councilors, staff members, or the audience. Defamatory or libelous comments will not be accepted. It is expected that you will maintain decorum and respect for each other. A wide variety of viewers watch these proceedings, therefore, we ask that you would kindly refrain from the use of offensive language and name-calling. Distractions, take attention from the speaker. The audience, city council members, and city staff are asked to focus on the speaker during their time by being respectfully quiet. Okay, Mandy Strauss, you can go ahead and come up if you'd like to.
Use the wagon, his wheelchair is still broken from our car.
It's all right.
Spacing is not really designed for big-wheel vehicles.
Yes.
Just a reminder, you have three minutes. If you go beyond that, you can submit your written testimony to the council.
Okay, I'll try to make it quick.
Okay.
Mandy Strauss, here in Dallas, Oregon, and this is my son, Joey, who's six years old, but I will just point out just for the fact that what I'm talking about cognitively, developmentally, he's only about 10 months old. So, I've just been doing some reading, I don't know if there's an updated one, but on the Dallas Parks Master Plan back in 2015, and I just wanted to point out, the largest response came from people with disabilities. I was part of this, friends of ours in our special needs community was part of this for inclusivity. Survey respondents were asked to select populations, I believe, to be underserved by the Dallas Parks, a question that may be related to accessibility facilities and/or programming. Twenty-one percent answered people with disabilities, the largest amount of people that responded back on that. And then, April of 27, I'm sorry, April 27, 2021, about four and a half years ago, Gary Marks said, possibly by the end of the year, he mentioned motivated to complete the project on John Bernard Park. December 14 of 2021, there was a committee that met that asked about what they wanted for the park, and they took family input, which just shows that there is a swing. There's a sticky note here, too, that was written, "A swing for the disabled people, please," with bringing dots being the top priority. March 7, this whole committee thing, March 7 of 2022, this was presented to you folks as what was needed. March 30, we were all really excited, and especially in this community, that the Blazers, Moda, all abilities, I think that's the key word, is all abilities. Yes, everybody keeps using the word inclusivity, all-inclusive, all abilities is like for somebody like Joey, who, yes, he's in a wheelchair, and I know you all have pointed out that there's going to be things at John Bernard Park where he can wheel up, I guess. Joey can't use his hands or his feet. Everything we have to do, we have to do for him because of his cognitive level. He is smart and bright and beautiful and joyful, but he's not able to just push him up. The one thing Joey and a lot of kids that are both physically disabled and cognitively disabled that brings more joy to them than anything else is a swing. I think I've shared that, I think I've given you background on his disability and whatnot. And then, just what's currently on the website for John Bernard Park is, if you, if you, you know, what am I trying to say? Zoom, thank you, thank you. If you zoom in, you can see the part, you can see the swing, the swing that was mentioned when we all got excited about it a long time ago. So, I know you all are thinking, and I think, Kim, I appreciate you engaging on Facebook with some of the families and us that were concerned about not having the swing, and it was said that that swing is going to be moved to the Dallas City Park. Now, I'd like all to, I'm out of time, but I want to figure, I want to know how you're going to get Joey in wheelchairs through the grass on our old crumbly sidewalks. I know it's going to take concrete and all that, there's a space at John Bernard Park. That space should be utilized for kids like Joey and his friends and people in our community. Joey's not getting services here that he deserves, that we feel he deserves. We transferred him out to Cascade School District this year. He's having a great, fantastic time. They have an all-abilities park in Cascade, Maryground Park, which I believe Astoria did with their money from Moda money. There's a lot of parks that are out there, and I think I shared that with you. When I went to Salt Lake, his Cornelia Dayland team were like, "That's so exciting, your town has an all-abilities park." Nope, it doesn't. So, we have to look elsewhere for places to take Joey so he can play on the playground with his siblings and cousins and have a good time. So, we wish it was right here in our own community, but it's just not a priority, and that's very sad to us.
Thank you, Mandy. You might have some information on that later.
I think there's an update, is that right, on the agenda?
Yeah, on the agenda, there'll be some more information tonight on that. Do you have anyone else in the audience who wants to testify tonight? Do we have anyone online? All right, we'll close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda, and that's to approve the September 13, 2025 city council meeting minutes.
Who's to approve?
I have a motion by David Shane, a second by Counsel Holsapple. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing done, passes unanimously. Time for reports or comments from mayor and council members. Counsel Schilling?
Thank you, Mayor. This was last week on Thursday was our, my MWAAC Committee, Mid-Wilheland Area Committee on Transportation with ODOT, and that's where we get a lot of updates. So, I'll try and go through this fairly quickly. So, the Center Street Bridge project is getting funded supposedly this month. It will go to bid in February and start construction in June. It will greatly affect people in transportation. That June start does not mean that traffic will be impacted at that point. It'll probably be July or August before the bridge starts having some impacts. And from my understanding, most of those impacts are going to be occurring at nighttime, not during daytime. Don't hold me to that.
Are they still talking, are they still talking about three years?
Well, this project is two years. It affects eight different abutments, basically. So, the Center Street Bridge center section, the span section, actually is going to be three to five years down the road because that's a quarter-billion-dollar project. This is just stabilizing the on-ramps, basically, but there are eight bridges in that area. So, that's called Center Street, but it's kind of wild. The next intersection that we'll talk about is 223 Kings Valley Highway and 22, that roundabout will go to bid in February 16, February 19, I mean, and construction will start probably about the same time in June or July. It looks like it will be a two-year project, just like the one out here on Cloud Corner Road. They will start with, at this point in time, they will start with the south side, so that's the side closest to Dallas, and they will keep two lanes open at all times and do the south side, and then the following year in '27, they will finish the north side. At that time, they will actually start with the intersection of Perry Dale. They're not realigning, well, they are realigning Perry Dale, they're not moving Perry Dale, they're realigning it. Perry Dale is a lot like the intersection we had here in town by Safeway. They're taking it from being an X and straightening it up, so there's shorter distances to travel and putting, I think they're putting turn lanes in. Moving to the highest priority in our region, that's the Highway 51, Doakes Ferry interchange area. Again, that's a $275 million project in 2024 costs. They have broken it into eight different projects. The first project that's the number-one priority will be eliminating the left-hand turn from all westbound traffic onto Highway 51. The way that is to be accomplished is to be a very similar on-off ramp to that at the Rickroyal 99 interchange. So, it will loop out and you no longer have to cross, it'll be an elevated, no roundabouts, that's all gone, so it's more like the Rickroyal. That project thought was going to be around $80 million. The new project cost, looks like it's going to be $50 million, so it's, the funding is pretty much ready. We'll probably see that happen probably in the next five years, which sounds like a long time, but that's quick in road work. The other project, big change, is eastbound traffic for Doakes Ferry is now going to be an elevated, so it will no longer be on-grade, so you will take an overpass if you're heading east to take Doakes Ferry. There will still be no turns at the left. The interesting thing about the project is Phase Three is a roundabout at the mortuary. There will be a roundabout to create a U-turn facility so people can come from Highway 51, or they can use that whole interchange section by going down to Doakes Ferry, looping back around, or basically you can do a circle there with that roundabout that's going. And, yes, it will slow traffic down. That is one thing that they're trying to do with that roundabout there at the mortuary. Oh, the reason the number-one phase for the overpass is, of the accidents that occur at the Highway 51 Doakes Ferry area, 60% of all accidents are, have a component of human error in it. And so, there was a question real quick, is why do we call them accidents instead of just calling them human errors? Thirty-three percent of all accidents, this is a statewide statistic, we're actually lower than the nation, but 33% of all accidents incur because of impairment due to alcohol or drugs. Forty percent of all accidents in the state of Oregon have a speed-related portion of it. So, if we can control those three things, which are pretty much human error, so drugs, alcohol, speed, and human error, we would do, come a long way to make our roads safer. Thank you, Mayor.
To Counsel Schilling, Counsel Blaser?
So, I also work for Dallas School District, where I serve on the safety committee, and I had a message to pass along to Jennifer from Bob Archer, who is the chair of our safety committee, wanted me to pass on his pleasure in working with Mr. Pierce on the projects, his professionalism and always having a lot of energy upbeat, and he looks forward to any projects in the future that he gets a chance to work with Michael, and he just wanted me to express his gratitude for an amazing job he does, and he's an asset to the projects we have him on. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the question. Counsel Beriantos?
Yes, I just want to let everyone know, this afternoon, I put in an application for the Open Polk County Commissioner's Position, Position Number Three. I don't want it to be a distraction of my work here. Please don't take it as anything where that I'm not happy here or anything like that, but I just wanted to be upfront, let everyone know, and I'll continue to do my job here as a local government for the city of Dallas.
Carlos? Anyone else have any comments or thing for the council? Yes, Counsel Schilling?
Brian, you went over it, the SynTech engineering, when did you, was that in a letter to us, the tour that we went on?
I probably mentioned it in my weekly update that I provided to the council.
Just to put it out on public record, it's been fun to go back into SynTech engineering after four years of being there and seeing the developments that's occurring in the old Pregatser Tyco building. They are a big asset, they're here to stay. It feels like they weren't here to stay, but we are going to actually have a permanent sign being installed, and so they are part of the community. They have over 100 employees that are here at the Dallas plant, they are hiring another approximately 20 people this month, is what their goals are. They've only utilized 30% of the facility at this time, but have a very vigorous ambition of hoping to complete the infill of that entire site within the next five years. Truthfully, they want to do it in two years or one year, depends which guy you talk to, but realistically, it's probably a five-year infill. And they encourage city council to continue to make sure that that area around them stays industrial because it's not just for them as things start to go vertical. Transportation to Dallas is not, we're not on a main road, we're not, we don't have I-5 coming by our door, and so they would like to be able to move coating facilities here and a whole bunch of different facilities here. They've also eliminated a, what's the semiconductor portion? They had aerospace here and semiconductor here, they are now 100% aerospace, so it's pretty neat seeing some of the projects. If you ever get an opportunity to go view the facility, it's cutting-edge technology, doing things that would make you proud.
Anything else? All right, we'll move right on to reports from the city manager and staff.
All right, thank you, Mayor Slack. We have a few reports tonight. The first one is a sidewalk repair program policy. So, this is a recommendation coming from the Public Administration Committee and staff, and so the Public Administration Committee reviewed the draft policy, which is included as Exhibit or Attachment A to this report. The policy really kind of outlines a lot of the benchmarks of the program as well as the criteria. The purpose of this is, we have a sidewalk repair reimbursement program today that wasn't ever formally recognized or adopted by council, you know, via policy or even administratively at the staff level, so this rectifies that. It also modifies the program. Currently, someone can apply for a $500 reimbursement after they've repaired a sidewalk that's eligible for reimbursement. This sets it up more like a grant program, right? So, you ask in advance of doing the work, if your project is eligible and we have funding to supply that, then we would approve that ahead of the work happening, and then you would then do the work, submit your reimbursement, and get reimbursed. It increases the amount of reimbursement from $500 into the current program to up to $2,500, so that's a significant increase, but, you know, as these construction costs have grown over time, we feel that that was an appropriate amount for reimbursement. And it's, $2,500 is a maximum amount, or 50% of the total project cost, whichever's less. So, if it's only a, you know, $3,000 project, they would get $1,500, not $2,500 towards that project. The criteria are listed again in here for an eligible project. A lot of the aspects of whether your project is eligible would be determined through the Public Works Department. So, if you have, you know, sidewalk that was damaged by maybe your own neglect, that would not be eligible, but if it was, you know, natural wear and tear, or maybe you have tree roots that are, you know, uplifting the sidewalk and cracking it, that would be, you know, an eligible expense, an eligible sidewalk repair. So, that's really the kind of the nuts and bolts of the program. If you have questions, certainly happy to answer them. If not, there is a, I thought we had a recommended motion, but I don't see it. We can take a recommended motion to adopt the program.
Counsel Holsapple?
So, we, in the last discussion, discussed about wear, tear, and the actual portion, and one of the examples given was putting blocks up and running your car up on the sidewalk and that. My question to you is, in the neighborhoods where development has happened here in the last 15, 20 years, the sidewalks and the driveways are, the driveway accesses, are those considered part of the sidewalk? If they run along in the sidewalk, anywhere it drops down, do allow the driveway accesses? That portion, that strip, part of the?
Yes, so a driveway apron and the driveway itself where the sidewalk traverses the driveway, that's, that would be an eligible sidewalk repair. So, if, if that portion of the sidewalk is broken up through, you know, tree roots or even just natural wear and tear over time, right, that portion of the sidewalk is generally more reinforced. There's rebar components in that portion of the sidewalk, which aren't in the other, you know, other areas of the sidewalk, but, you know, if that's, you know, torn up, that would be eligible for reimbursement.
Thank you. So, Shane?
Yeah, just, just sort of filling in a little backstory for, the committee had a lot of conversation about this, and probably the most noticeable thing in here is the increase from 500 to 2,500, which sounds like a lot, and we had a lot of discussion about that. That $500 number, basically, if you look at the price of getting any kind of construction of any sort done today, materials, labor, and all that goes into it, that $500 number sounds like something out of the 1980s, and so that's why, and it hadn't been updated in maybe forever, as far as I know, so that's why the wide disparity was there. We had a lot of conversation about that, and it looked like the right thing to do.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Shane. Anyone else need to comment on that, or?
I do have one comment. I should have brought it up in committee at the time. There is a portion that sounds great when you first look at it in here that talks about getting three bids. I don't know if anybody's tried to get three bids lately. Three bids is not an easy thing to get, so it is a very large discouragement for this, and I also know how the bids, competitive bids, work. They find, a lot of homeowners will find the contractor they want and then go find some friends, they're contractors, and get bids that, and use the one contractor that they want. So, I don't know if we're really, I don't know if that, if we really need three bids or if one or two would suffice. Is there a requirement, why we need the three bids? I mean, we can leave it the way it is, I just wanted to put my two cents on being in the contracting world, I just know that it's very hard for individual people to get those bids nowadays.
There's not a legal requirement for them to get, you know, more than one bid, there's not a requirement for them to, legal requirement for them to get any bids, but we felt that, you know, getting a bid, in this case, we just proposed three, and that's what the committee recommended, but if you want to change that to a lesser number, that'd be fine.
Counsel Shane?
Again, I'm in favor of anything that streamlines people's ability to get things done, so, yeah, I'm not at all married to that three bids. If the sense of the group is to lower it, I'll totally support that.
I would recommend that we could require at least one bid, right? So, that way, we have an understanding of what the project costs and those things, so that would be the minimum that I would recommend.
Propose that we change it from three to one.
You can make that part of your motion if you.
Put language in, we encourage extra bids. I mean, it'd be not streamlined, but.
You can certainly just add language there that says, "Property owners must, you know, obtain a minimum of one bid, additional bids may result in a more competitive application," something like that.
But they only get up to the 2,500, so if they, they have to pay more if they have something more expensive.
Sure.
About going in because of the terms of the program? That's kind of why I brought it up, is I don't want it to be a roadblock for people not to use the program.
I think you're ready for a motion? Okay.
I'm going to move that we approve the, present, the sidewalk repair program policy as presented with the modification of requiring only one bid rather than three.
Motion from Counsel Shane, do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Counsel Fitzgerald. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, on to the next item.
All right, thank you, Mayor Slack. The next item is the accessible. The next item is the accessible play equipment. I'll invite our Public Works Director, Jennifer Ward, to come up and discuss this topic with the council. Oh, did I?
Talk about the tour of the Public Works Building.
Seven B.
Sorry, I didn't have a report. Yes. While Jennifer comes up, this will be really fast. So Jennifer, you're welcome to come up for the next topic. Yeah, the tour of the Public Works Building construction site. So this is a request that was made by Counselor Holsaple, and I just wanted to talk about it just here amongst the council without a written report. So we're welcome to, in the past, we've done tours of our facilities around. We went to the fire department, the library, and the Public Works property before. We've done that as public meetings. We've learned through the Oregon Government Ethics Commission that that's not actually a meeting, as long as we don't discuss the financial aspects of the work that's going on while we're down there. And so we certainly want to, you know, encourage councilors to come down and just engaging the interest from the council. Are you interested in going down to the Public Works property, looking at the building progress, what's going on, and having a conversation?
Certainly am.
Just looking for head nods on this. Yeah. So I'm looking at our city recorder. Kim, is the 20th of October available in the 6:00 p.m. hour? We should have looked at this ahead of time. I think we did. We'll make sure you have the proper PPE.
There is no work session.
Yeah, there's no work session scheduled for October 20th. So if that day is amenable for people, we'll just plan on doing it then.
Right before the meeting.
Yeah, we'll do like a six o'clock, six o'clock work, you know, work session time down there, just meet at the site and we'll walk around and tour that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, accessible play equipment, next on the list.
That's right.
Jennifer, our Public Works Director is here to talk about that.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. This was a, this was an item that was brought to the Building and Grounds Committee, so some of you have already heard it already. But as you did hear earlier this, this evening, there has been interest from our community in increasing the amount of accessible play opportunities for children in our community. And we are addressing that to some extent with John Barnard Park. As was mentioned, John Barnard Park does not have an accessible swing. We were approached with, about a year ago, there was a couple that also had concerns about play opportunities for their child, their grandchild, actually, and approached the Parks Board with the possibility of installing ADA swings at City Park. And so that's been something that staff and the Parks Board have been pursuing for the past year. What you see in your, in your packets is a proposal to put in a two-bay ADA swing at City Park at a location that is accessible from the sidewalk. It will feature either poured-in-place or tiled rubberized play surface, so it can be accessed with wheeled devices and mobility aids. And we would, let's see here, that's purchase of the, of the swing of the surface and installation as well as preparation of the surface, which we would be doing with the park staff. This is a total project cost of about $40,000, which qualifies it to be a capital improvement project. This project was not in, it was in the works, but hadn't been solidified when we were doing our capital planning for this fiscal year, so was not included in this year's capital improvement program, coming before the council to ask that it be added so that we can move forward with it. You'll see that we have great community support for this project. Dallas Rotary has committed $5,000, as has the Dallas Community Foundation. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Yes.
Go ahead, Kim.
Oh.
Yeah.
So it was said earlier in the meeting today during public comment that there was a swing that was supposed to be at the John Barnard Park and isn't? Is, is that right?
Not, not specifically. So the, the drawings that were, that were referenced were an artistic rendition. They were never the, right, never the actual sets that, that were designed to go in those places. We did run into, we did run into some space constraints with actual swing sets there because they require so much space, both vertically and around the side for safety purposes. It would be hard. If you put in swings, you would have limited amount of what else you could put in there. There is a tire swing that is included as part of the nature play area in it.
Is it horizontal or?
Yes, it is, yes. It is a horizontal tire swing. So that will be part of John Barnard Park. You're welcome.
So what play equipment at the new park is accessible?
Is accessible, right. So there are, depending on how you count it, there are four play areas at John Barnard Park. One of them is kind of fun. It's what we call the hobbit hole. And that is a corrugated pipe in a ground area that can be climbed through and over. The other, the other is a traditional play structure, kind of a tower situation that you might see in, in other parks. The third area is the nature play area that I just spoke about, featuring kind of non-traditional play equipment, more wooden, earthy kind of texture, feel and look to it. And then the, the fourth is the area that has the accessible play structure. That, that play structure will be surrounded by a rubberized play surface, unlike the other play surfaces that have wooden chips, like our other parks do, to make access to it easier. It also, it involves, it's a play structure that has two decks, and the access to the first deck connects directly with the sidewalk so that you can roll a child right onto that play deck and that they are able to manipulate everything within that play deck. There's low transfer slides to make it easier to transfer a child out of, or for a child to transfer themselves out of a mobility play, mobility device. There is play musical areas and play, play areas for, touch wood's the word I'm working for. Textile, thank you. Both from that deck and around the outside of the deck. There's seating for adults to be able to monitor and also for children that maybe want to be in the play, but want a little space to kind of observe beforehand. There's musical opportunities. There is, there are different climbing structures so that one is for a little bit easier as you're developing skills, the other is a little more advanced. So it addresses, it offers quite a few different opportunities and addresses a variety of abilities and opportunities. Yes.
Hobbit hole thing?
Mm-hmm.
Can a wheelchair go through there?
A wheelchair could not go through.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Too small?
Yes, I suppose, I suppose a very, I suppose, both because it's corrugated.
Okay. I didn't know if the part in the ground was cor, I mean, if it was covered with anything. Okay.
It's corrugated. Could go over, though.
I have two questions. It, it looks, I was looking at the paperwork and it looks like there was some traction, there was some push in October 2024 of getting this project kind of into more so the planning and to the execution phase. What happened that, for lack of better terms, I think there was a halt or something happened where it didn't kind of progress?
Right, so this is a project that's been underway for many years. You're right about that, Counselor Bariantos. It precedes me in my time at the, at the city. There were a couple, so when I came onto the city, we were just finishing up kind of the, the public outreach, the, the, the design phase. And, and that, and that had already taken some time to get that far. From there, we pursued grant opportunities to help leverage the SDC funds that we're using to pay for the, to pay for the park. Our first one, we did, did not get. And so then we went for a second one. So the park is being funded in part with a land and water conservation fund. This is a federal fund that's a pass-through grant from Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. Federal grants come with more hoops to jump through. So it took us a little while longer to get to the point where you have an agreement and can actually start spending the money. Just want to mention, because you heard it earlier, there, there was also a mod grant of about $37,000 specifically for ADA accessible play equipment, and it was spent in that way. Didn't cover the entire cost of it, but certainly contributed. Also, Game Time, which is the manufacturer of much of our play equipment in the city, was also offering a grant for play structures of up to 50% off. And so we went ahead and made that purchase when that was available to help offset costs. So it did take a couple of years for us to get the funding in place. Once that was done, we, we bid it out and have been going, let's see here, I think we broke ground in, in March and have been working on construction ever since.
And I, I was following the email thread and it looked like July 23rd, 2025, the pour-in-place was quoted as $23,000 install. And just four days later, on the 27th, the price went up, the price went up to $25,300. So it went up $2,300 in just four days. Was there a reason for that?
I don't know about the specific reason, and I would need to, to just go back and look at it more carefully. I tend to think that she gave me a, a general quote to begin with and then tracked it, tracked it down more and got a more specific quote.
I don't have the, I'm not looking at the, oh, we can go to it right now. If you look at July 23rd, 2025, and the wording on there is something like, hey, we have the price for you and it is $2300 pour-in-place.
Page 11.
Page 11. If you, and it's in the middle there and it says, it's right at $23,000 install excluding sub-bays and site work. And.
Bottom of 10.
Right. See it? Yes, so then in the bottom of 10, it goes up to $25,300. And I was just wondering, in four days, you know, what changed?
So I'll answer a little bit to that. There's also an email on Friday, July 25th, 2025, actually, that was sent that day. On, on Wednesday, July 23rd, it says the bottom of page 10, the very bottom. It says on Wednesday, July 23rd, 2025, 528, Martha wrote, I already up, I already got the PIP, which is a poured-in-place, updated. It will be 25,300. So, so I'm guessing what Jennifer mentioned was that the initial $23,000, is that the price? Yeah, the initial $23,000 was probably more of an estimate.
And if you look even earlier at July 23rd, at 522, she had failed to re-figure the square footage when we moved to the ADA bay. And so she was just revising those surface numbers.
So the area got a little bit bigger, Carlos, which is what caused the price to increase?
Right. I think she gave me the initial quote, but based on a bay for non-ADA swings, which are larger than regular swings. And so the bay gets a little bit larger when you put in those swings.
All right. One last question is, how many, how many swing sets did you look at before you decided to go with this one company?
I can't remember the exact number, but we did look at several because I was looking for, and actually, now that I, now that I think about it, some of that footwork was done for us by the, the couple that originally approached us, and they had done some initial research. So I had an idea of what they thought would be helpful. I looked at those, also contacted Game Time because they've been a good supplier for us in the past and was able to find what we needed.
Thank you. I did look up, just so you know, I looked up on Google and those swings can go up to $70,000 for almost exactly what you, what we're getting. So it's between, like, it could be between $7,000 and $70,000. So I think we got a pretty good price.
Oh, sorry.
Is it possible to be a little bit more specific on the location and the completion time?
Um, I, yes, I guess it, I will try to be more specific. It's hard without a, a map to, or a picture to show you on. But if you go to the all-good side of the park where we have our largest play structure, there is space right there, right adjacent to that area that we can, is where we're intending on putting it. As far as timeframe, once this is, I get it approved to add it to the capital improvement plan, then I can go forward and place the order and start making plans to do that. I'm not sure about the constraints of laying the play surface when our weather is poor. So this may be something that is available in the spring. I, I just don't know yet. But soon, like, I can get going on it immediately.
I just think there's a, the public wants to know how things are progressing. You can see there's a definite, they just want to know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Last question is, do we have a Parks and Recreation Director yet? Do you know?
We do not. That, that position was eliminated.
So you're kind of wearing two hats?
Parks does, is one of the divisions under Public Works, and so that remains under my supervision. You're welcome.
Brian?
Jennifer, just to confirm, based on some tests we received tonight, the ADA swings in City Park will be accessible from paved surfaces, right? We're having paved walkways that would enable, you know, people and mobility devices or otherwise to be able to access without having to go over grass or, or natural areas, correct?
Correct. They will be accessible from the sidewalks that are currently in place.
To circle back to John Barnard Park and that project, the, the ADA all-abilities equipment that's being installed is, goes like the national standards for, for accessible equipment, correct?
Correct.
And our equipment meets that.
Yes, absolutely. And Game Time provided those standards. Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, David.
Tonight's proposal is specifically about John Barnard?
No, tonight's proposal is specifically for ADA swings for City Park.
Oh, the way around, okay.
Yes.
This was actually stimulated by Robert's question a moment ago about completion date. Once you're able to place the order, will the process of formalizing that include the, the contractor giving you a specific completion date? Are we going to ask for one? How does that work? And, and before you answer that, in the broader picture, because, because now that the subject has sort of come up, how do we, when we commission a major project, capital project of any type, how do we work out and negotiate commission date, completion dates with, with the contractors involved? So specifically for this one and then generally?
Right, specifically for this one. So the, the surfacing comes in over $10,000 alone, so I'll need to get three, three bids for that. You know, these were, these were initial quotes that we were given. So I'll need to go through that process. And then it's a matter of, you know, working with the contractor to, one, I want to establish, you know, is this work that can be done in the, you know, in the winter weather? And if not, you know, then we would put them on contract to start as early as possible in the spring. They give us an idea of, you know, how long that, that work takes and, you know, we capture the appropriate completion date in the contract.
Robert's question, Robert's point is a very good one. People do want, you know, the citizens do want to know when we undertake a major product that's visible and going to impact a lot of people. They usually do sooner or later ask, when's it going to be done? That question comes up all the time.
Yes, it does.
And I would just, again, kind of highlight a tool that we have on our city website. We have a constructions. We have a constructions map and project page, and so projects like this or other projects that are in our community, our citizens can go to that, that webpage, click on a project and see all the information about that project, right? The funding sources, you know, any plans or specifications that we might have for that project, estimated completions date, estimated start dates. We try not to put the completion dates on there because there are so many variables, but we certainly want to let them know, hey, this is started, right? And then they can get an idea of, okay, I can go see the progress as it goes. But like Jennifer mentioned, there are, you know, a lot of factors, particularly rain and the wet season that's going to, you know, maybe prohibit the ability to complete this project if we got away, you know, underway right away. But there's, you know, other factors, the ability for the contractor, depending on their schedule, what work they have ahead of them before our project. So, it, it's really hard to know precisely when a project's going to be completed until we, you know, get it started, and other factors that go into that. So, when we write contracts, we'll typically give a, you know, a range for the contractor to say, hey, we want this project completed by a certain date. And when we do that, we can be more specific to the public to say, this contract's expected to be completed by, you know, June of '26, if that's our date in the contract. Notwithstanding that, you know, may be able to be extended, depending on what the contract says and how it's written. More generally, to your question, if I understood it right, so when we have capital improvement projects or added to our capital improvement plan, those projects, though, should be identified in our master plans. And so, for example, we are in the process of updating our water, sewer, transportation, and soon-to-be Parks Master Plan. As those master plans get updated, we identify projects. Those are 20-year look-aheads, right? So, what is it that's going to be completed in the next 20 years as our community continues to develop and grow? So, from that master plan, we will identify and start to prioritize those projects. And we'll have a general idea of how much that project may cost at the time that we expect to generally complete it. So, those projects then get transitioned from the master plans into our capital improvement plan, which is a five-year rolling plan. And so projects in that 20-year plan that are beyond that first initial five-year scope generally don't get on the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, until later, until within that five-year window. Once they're on that, on that plan, though, then we have a better idea of, okay, we're anticipating this to happen within the next five years. As it gets, you know, year, year-over-year towards the front of that, that plan, that project's then going to go, you know, in design, engineering, if that's required, that type of work, and then, you know, making sure we have the funding to pay for that is a part of that process for the capital improvement planning. Once we're at the stage of it actually being the year that we're going to complete that, then if there's contracts that are required, or if it's just purchasing equipment, for example, maybe there's not a contract and we can just get that done. So, I think it really kind of depends, but generally, you have a master plan, you identify on that master plan, is this a five-year, 10-year, 15-year, or 20-year project? Then it gets transferred to the CIP when it's within that five-year window on those master plans. And then when it's up for the year that it's going to be built, that's when we can get to the more specificity of the contracts, when the contractor's going to start, when it's going to be completed.
Yeah, my, my, what I was really getting at was more in the context of specific programs. Once we've awarded a contract or, or in the process of negotiating to award a contract, how firm the, the delivery dates get. And yeah, I understand, there's a lot of, there's a lot of acts of nature that can change that, but that's what I was getting at.
And that really does depend, so sorry for misunderstanding your question. Hopefully, the public at home got a good explanation of how our general large picture process works.
That was valuable.
When a, when we're in negotiation for a contract, we'll start to consider factors of, you know, is this a project that can be done in wet weather versus dry weather, right? Depending on the time of year we're in. So, we tend to be pretty reasonable with those accommodations that are going to be needed for the project that we're doing. So, you know, we like to have our projects be done in a, at a good pace. We don't like to drag them out forever. So, typically, I, I don't think we've signed many contracts that allow someone to go beyond a year, especially if it's a construction-type project, to get it completed, so.
Councilor Schilling?
One last comment, well, for me, and then I have one more thing after that. I just want to thank you, Jennifer, for very clearly identifying the procurement process that you're going through, identifying the critical path that you're going through with this project, and then talking about the inclement weather options, delays that could actually happen, which I understand goes with all our capital improvement projects. This is a unique one. Usually, we don't see these come to us with this much conversation. And so, I, we greatly appreciate all the hard work that you've done and that Gary Marks has done in the projects and the capital improvement over the last year. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to add the ADA accessible swing set project to the City Capital Improvement Plan with project completion at Dallas City Park in the fiscal year of 2025, 2026.
Second.
Been moved by Councilor Schilling and seconded by Councilor Shane. Is there any further discussion?
Just very briefly, just tack on to what you said. That was a, a really nice, clear, lucid explanation, so thank you for that.
There's no other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. All right, and we'll move on to reading of ordinance, ordinance number 1916, its first reading.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 1916 is an ordinance amending Dallas Municipal Code, Section 2.905, to increase the number of members to maintain a quorum for the Economic Development Commission. So, this is the first time you're seeing this. It didn't go through committee. When you updated the commission to add the ex-officio member, we should have amended this section to make the quorum five instead of four, because now we have eight members. So, you needed a quorum of five, not four. That's all this is.
Discussion on that? If not, we'll declare it, pass this first reading. Second reading of ordinance, ordinance number 1915?
Here, ordinance number 1915 is an ordinance amending Dallas Development Code, Chapter 2.10, regarding historic preservation regulations. Happy to answer any questions about this.
This is the one we went through the explanation of at the last meeting.
Yeah, so this is the, the full repeal and replace of the historic preservation code in the development code, so this would be subject to final state adoption. We've already passed this through the Oregon State Historic Preservation Office. They're very happy with this work. In fact, they're going to take some of our recommended changes to their model code and incorporate it into their, their new model code. So, very happy with this. I will mention that you're going to see another ordinance, because we did pull out of the development code, the formation and the duties and responsibilities of the Historic Preservation Commission. So, those will be in a separate ordinance, and that'll be housed in the municipal code. There's a lot more flexibility with that, and that's where all your other boards and commissions are housed, including the planning commission. So, made sense to pull that out of the development code and into the municipal code. So, you'll see that ordinance at your next, at your next meeting.
Councilor Fitzgerald?
Could you tell me what the difference between a historic resource inventory and a historic resource list is?
Yeah, so, an inventory is, is less formal than a list, right? So, your inventory is, it's a study document, you went out and you inventoried your, your resources within a geographic area, and you, and you bring that inventory back and you say, this is an inventory. It says what buildings, you know, gives a kind of the characteristics of the resources, the buildings, you know, how old they are, who maybe their, their architect was, or who built them, when they were built, you know, the, the significant features that may still be on them, or changes that happened to the building over time. So, that's the inventory. It's not a regulatory list or document. The historic resources list is an adopted list of resources that, that a governing body has decided is your list of historic resources, and those are, properties on that list are generally subject to the regulations.
So, since the inventory isn't subject to the regulations, is that what you said? That's why the objection of an owner shall not prevent property from being inventoried?
Correct.
And then, but for the list, they can object? Okay.
Councilor Shane?
Would it be not too much of a stretch to say that the inventory is the, the, the homework and the list is the finished product?
Yes, I think that's correct, but beyond that, just because your property was inventoried does not mean that it's going to be listed. Property owners can object to being put on a list, and that objection pulls them off the consideration for being on a list. That's, I think you're concerned, Councilor Fitzgerald.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I guess I'm ready for the city recorder to have a roll call vote.
Councilor Jants?
Yes.
Councilor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilor Shane?
Yes.
Councilor Spivey?
Yes.
Councilor Bariantos?
Yes.
Councilor Blaser?
Yes.
Councilor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Councilor Hozapple?
Yes.
All right, it passes unanimously. Do we have any other business to bring before the council tonight? Anyone? Councilor Jants?
We talked a lot about parks tonight. I just thought, is there anything in the works for repairing or updating the equipment at Roger Jordan Park, I believe it is?
Jennifer, I don't know if you want to answer that. If you want to answer, you can come up to the microphone, that'd be best.
Some of it had electronics and things that might never work again, but...
Yeah, so I know, just with my own volunteering out there, because I've done some volunteering work out there before, yeah, the electrical components are, are pretty much toast, have been destroyed. There have been times where I've noticed there's like a, I wouldn't call it a swing, but almost like a platform that you can stand on. That's been broken before, and I know that's been repaired and replaced. As, as play equipment is broken, I always encourage people to make sure they report that, so we can go out and do the repairs ourselves when that happens. But I don't know if there's a, a plan for any kind of wholesale replacement, if that's what you're asking.
For Roger Jordan at this time, the, the electronic equipment, sorry, was it you, Councilor Spivey, who asked the question? Councilor Jants, sorry. The, the electric, electronic equipment that you mentioned, we removed. It was, it wasn't functional, hadn't been for a long time, and was going to be difficult, if not...
Still missing a swing there as well? There's, I think there's a swing missing.
I would, I would have to check. I don't, I don't know offhand.
Just curious, thank you.
There was the, it was a platform. It looked like it would be an area where a swing would be, but it was actually a standing platform that was kind of lower. I know that had been broken at one time. I don't know if it was beyond repair, maybe that got removed. I've not been out there to see that, but I know that within the last year and a half, two years, that was, at one point, that was broken, and we were looking at repairing it. I don't know if it was done, or maybe that was removed. Yeah.
Business before the council this evening? If not...